I'd like to call the March 15, 2022, meeting of the Buncombe County Commission to Order. Thank you all for being with us this evening. Let's begin our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise and join us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we begin our meeting, I wanted to announce that any members of the public who attended this meeting using the county's parking decks or public transit could have your validation for parking or transit validated by one of the officers who's with us this evening. You can see them on your way out. It's valid for today only. I'd like to read the ethics reminder to the board. "In accordance with the Code of Ethics adopted by the Board, all county commissioners have a duty to obey all applicable laws regarding official actions, to uphold the integrity and independence of the office, to avoid impropriety in the exercise of official duties, to faithfully perform the duties of the office, and to conduct the affairs of the governing Board in an open and public manner. Is there any item on the agenda, the outcome of which would have a direct, substantial, and readily identifiable financial impact for any Board member? Does any Board member have a financial interest in any public contract coming before the Board today? There being none, all Board members have a duty and obligation to vote on all matters voted on by the Board at this meeting." Commissioners, are there any questions about any items on the consent agenda? Do any members of the public have any questions about any items on the consent agenda? Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda and to follow the remainder of the agenda as published?
So moved.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we come to public comment. Review the rules for public comment. The time limit for individual comment to the Board is three minutes. If your time expires, you can leave any questions with your name, address, and phone number with our county clerk, Lamar Joyner, here. Board members are not expected to comment during the public comment period. This is a chance for the community to speak to the Board. And when the speakers come up, you'll get an orange light when you have about 30 seconds left and a red light when your time is up. And we do ask that you conclude your comments once your time is up because we want to give everyone the same amount of time to speak to the Board. All right, we've had a number of folks sign up for public comment. The first is Kathy Stillwell.
Get this down for short people.
Sure. If you could share your where you live.
Okay. So anyway, my name is Kathy Stillwell, and I live at 410 Roland Road in Swananoa. So I wrote this down. I had to take a deep breath because this is nerve wracking, and I have never really done this before. So we were here on March the 1st to tell you about our situation with our Dollar General store that is presently going up. As you may recall, we were here to plead our case. Since that meeting, as predicted, numerous near misses with construction traffic have occurred just about every day. I was pulled into Roland, pulling into Roland, and a truck pulled out from the driveway at the same time and nearly hit me, and the car behind me nearly rear-ended me. You'll hear more stories from others. There's three other people that are going to discuss this as well. In recent days, one of the construction trucks knocked over a power line. The light at the intersection went out, the cable went out, our power went out, and the internet was, and the internet was down for about two hours, causing a major mess on Highway 70 as well. Roland was blocked yesterday with construction trucks. On March the 7th, engineers Mark Gibbs and Chris Merlin from the North Carolina Department of Transportation agreed to meet us at the site. We were very appreciative of that. Matt Barker, who could not attend tonight, showed them the measurements he, Matt, had taken. Then they did the same. After they took the measurements, they agreed mistakes were made. You were right, and you caught it. They tried to explain the wording to justify the variances. It's like they're trying to help Dollar General make justifications for an illegal entrance or driveway, whatever you'd like to call it. This isn't just a mistake, it's an accident waiting to happen. It wasn't just a few feet on the measurements. The minimum footage for a corner clearance was supposed to be 100 feet. It was 6.5. That's not just a little bit, that's a lot. The only thing that they agreed to do was set back the entrance further, which will not correct the problem. We have diagrams to prove how long it takes for a car to stop if one pulls in front of the other, kind of like what, you know, you did in driver's ed, you know? If you're driving 60 miles an hour, how long it takes you to stop? Well, if somebody's pulling out in front of you from a driveway, it's the same factor. So we asked the construction entrance to be halted until it could be reviewed for our safety concerns, and the engineer said that isn't going to happen. The only solution is to put the entrance, is to put it on Highway 70.
Please stop. Your time's up. All right, next is Brandy Norton.
Hi. My name is Brandy Norton. I'm also a resident of Swananoa, North Carolina, 149 Roland Road. And I'm also here to talk about the Dollar General being built in our neighborhood. I won't get into my grievances with the planning department at this time, but I will say that this is a case of the safety of county residents, your constituents, versus the needs of an out-of-state developer and corporation. The neighbors were concerned, and we contacted NC DOT. We've been trying to make it a lot of noise to whoever will listen to how unsafe the situation is. So we met with the DOT, and they agreed that we caught their mistake, and they have revised the driveway plan to allow for 30 more feet. But why? Why won't they close the existing construction driveway to make said adjustment? There's been near misses. I've almost had three accidents here in the last two weeks. I know I'm not the only one. It's a big neighborhood. There's over 100 homes there. There's over 400 art space families that travel our neighborhood every day, twice a day. So why do we have to keep having the near misses with construction vehicles? Why is Dollar General, why are the Dollar General needs greater than the existing neighbor safety? Why does my neighborhood have to settle for the minimum if they ever do actually open up the driveway and fix it and give us the extra 30 feet? Why won't the DOT close it? If you look at the Jasper Apartments that are being built right next door, you can see their road, they have at least 100-foot minimum, and that's a flat road. Warren Wilson is flat. It's not a blind curve. Roland Road, if you're turning right into the neighborhood, it is a blind curve. You cannot see. And 30 extra feet is not going to keep us from having an accident. I don't know why our safety has to come at the expense of what the Dollar General wants. You know, and then also when we pressed the NC DOT about why won't you close the driveway, they said, "We're not going to do it." And then they also threatened Jenny Wilds, who lives across from the site. They threatened that they could take her property to widen the road. The tractor-trailers cannot make this curve. They can't, if they come into Roland, they have to make a huge wide turn. They have to back up, block the traffic. I was almost in Highway 70 with my kids in the car, you know, because the tractor-trailer could not make the turn into the site. So therefore, they drive through the whole neighborhood and surrounding roads, Sherwood, which is right next to art space. They drive all through the neighborhood just to get to the site because they cannot make a right-hand turn. They have to make a left-hand turn, so they have to go through the whole neighborhood. And I'm just asking you guys to help us. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Gabriel Tree? If I've had your name pronounced incorrectly, I apologize. Is Gabriel here on the Dollar Store issue? Or Gabrielle? Sorry.
My name is Gabrielle Price. Since the last meeting, when I voiced my concerns about the safety and the non-compliant driveway for Dollar General and shared my story of almost getting hit by a construction truck, a few more problems have occurred, some that you've heard already. The power lines have been pulled down by the Dollar General tractor-trailers entering the site, causing the traffic lights and the neighborhood power outages in the middle of morning school and work traffic. It was chaos. Tractor-trailers have been having difficulty entering the work site, shutting down Roland Road and traffic on 70, trying to enter, causing people of our community to idle on 70, hoping that they don't get rear-ended. When Chris Medlin of NC DOT was confronted about this non-compliant driveway, he responded by saying, "You caught us." Thank goodness we did. He said he will not be shutting down the non-compliant construction entrance. I asked him, "You can't or won't?" He laughed and pivoted from my question. Why is it being left up to the community to make sure we are safe? Why is NC DOT not angry that Dollar General pulled the wool over their eyes? Why is NC DOT putting out an out-of-state developer before the needs and the safety of Buncombe County residents? Thank you.
The next person signed up is Caroline Minicozy.
Good evening. Thank you for hearing us. I am Caroline Minicozy. I live in Buckeye Cove in Swananoa, and the Dollar General development happening on Roland Road and 70 is of great concern to many, many people in the community. We have a petition with 12, 1,200 signatures, probably upward of that by now, with citizens that are concerned, not so much about Dollar General being stopped or it is a business, but the people that are probably going to be injured at this dangerous intersection. And the other ladies have spoken pretty clearly about, I hope you'll be able to come out and see, if you're turning off Highway 70 where people are going, you know, 40, 50 miles per hour, turning right into a store with a six-foot clearance to get in there is just incredibly dangerous. So you have all the art space traffic, you have 100 homes with all the traffic going into Sherwood Forest, you have all the people from Ashville Christian Academy, and then all the other people that live there. So it's just a really hazardous situation. And again, if it had been approved or it was within the confines of the law, that's one thing, but it's against the law. You know, there needs to be 100-foot clearance, and it's 6.5 feet. So I urge that you all do something, because NC DOT is clearly not. So that's all I have to say. This is a neighborhood service area that's zoned for, and this is not a neighborhood service. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Caroline. Don Yeldon.
I got notes. I want you all to listen very carefully what I'm saying. You won't believe me, you don't like what I say, but that's okay. I'm going to say it anyway. In 1871, we had a fire in Chicago, bad fire, burned the town down. In 1888, George Vanderbilt visited this area. In 1889, he started construction of the largest private home in the United States. And in 1895, he started the Biltmore School of Forestry, which led to the National Forest Service. So we wouldn't even have the National Forest Service, it's got that plan written up, if it hadn't have been for the wealth of the Vanderbells and his concern, because he cut all of his trees down, and now he saw his assets were gone, so he had to manage them. 1890, the timber speculators came to western North Carolina and started buying up oodles and oodles of land. As a matter of fact, they bought all the land that's now the Blue Ridge Parkway. Why did they buy it? They bought it to cut the trees, because the trees were needed. So in 1855, that railroad was opened up to Swananoa. And then in 1880, it was then connected to East Tennessee, Virginia, and Georgia in 1882. In 1923, back up on the dates, folks, at 13, my dad was kicked out of his house because his dad killed his dog, and he and my granddad, which was an old coot, got in a fight and threw him out of the house. And guess where he went to have a place to live? In a logging camp. Yes, at 13, cutting trees. And I see some of you looking down, not hearing what I'm saying, because you don't like the idea. We had it rough in this area, and if it hadn't have been for the trees, we wouldn't have the Biltmore State. If it hadn't have been for the trees, we wouldn't have what we've got. And even then, the head of the forestry division, the guy that started it all, Chink, says this, and listen very carefully, and I love this sentence because it shows you just how screwed up we got today. "The cradle of forestry is America's own story of his beloved school. It's also the story of the birth of forestry conservation in America, clashes with manlike Pincho." But he says this, and his philosophy is still true today. "The forestry is best which pays the best." So if you don't manage it for money, you're making a big mistake, and you're going to make it today. You watch me and see if I didn't call it right on the head. Good timing.
Good evening. I'm Terri Shoal. I live on Wickham's Fancy in Biltmore Lake. I've been a resident of Buncombe County for 25 years. It's home. I love it here, but I have to say, litter here has become a problem. I've spent too many days picking up styrofoam cups, plastic shopping bags, those single-use ketchup containers. We need a ban on single-use plastics and styrofoam. This may be a change for some of your constituents, but they can handle it. If you've ever shopped at Ingalls, I mean, sorry, if you've ever shopped at Aldi's or Hopie's or Sam's, you know, people have figured out how to carry their groceries out of the store into the car. They can adjust to not having shopping bags. They'll be fine. Additionally, the timing couldn't be better. With the prices of gasoline so high, we don't need petroleum going to make plastic bags. We can clean up our streets. It begins with banning styrofoam cups, single-use shopping bags, straws. We need your leadership. Thank you so much.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Anna Alsobrook. I live in Black Mountain, and I work with Mountain True in the French Broad River Keeper Program. I wanted to just take a moment to alert you all to a recent story featured on WLOS entitled, "Microplastic Pollution is Widespread Throughout the Waters of Western North Carolina." We at Mountain True have been analyzing water samples for microplastics for over a year, and 100% of these samples contain microplastics. For those who don't know, plastics never biodegrade. They merely break down into smaller and smaller pieces called microplastics and nanoplastics. So even when a body of water looks pristine and free of trash, it actually contains tons of these tiny particles. Our sampling shows microplastics across the region of western North Carolina, including the French Broad, Green, Hiawassee, Ouattagga, and Broad River watersheds. We know that this is bad for the environment, as the chemical additives used in making plastics can readily leach out. Studies are also showing impacts to human health, including impacts on respiratory, reproductive, and nervous systems. In the French Broad watershed, about 30% of the microplastics we have measured are what are called microfilms. Microfilms are the result of degraded packaging, like plastic bags and food wrappers. Plastic production, which is tied to the oil and gas industry, is increasing at alarming rates. The biggest growing sector of plastic production is actually single-use plastic. It makes up about 40% of the plastic production market. These single-use plastic items are used for mere minutes before being thrown away. For decades, we have been trying to recycle our way out of this problem, but the reality is that only 8% to 9% of plastic has ever been recycled. When it is recycled, it's typically downcycled, meaning it turns into a lesser quality product. That means an item can only be recycled one to two times before it reaches a format that can't be recycled anymore. Add to this fact that it is much cheaper for manufacturers to use virgin, meaning new or non-recycled plastic, in the production and packaging of their goods. If there's no financial incentive for them to use recycled materials, most will not. The market for recycled materials will remain small, and the total amount of plastic and microplastics in the world grows exponentially. The most effective way to mitigate these impacts is to pass an ordinance to reduce single-use plastic at the source. I urge you Commissioners to lead North Carolina in this. We are decades behind where we need to be on this issue. The problem needs to be addressed now, and Buncombe County can take the lead. Make our community a better and healthier place to live and recreate by passing an ordinance regulating single-use plastic. Thank you so much.
Sorry, my mic was off. Hey, Darlene.
No problem. It's Darlene Azarmy. Good evening, y'all. I'm here to just make a brief comment on behalf of the Women's Commission, of which I'm a member of, and if I have enough time, I'd like to cede a little time for a personal comment of my own. So I just wanted to give you all an update that on the Buncombe County Women's Commission Facebook page, we've highlighted folks who identify as women throughout the community, and we've just been spotlighting them, you know, in the spirit of Women's History Month. So just wanted to put that your way. And most importantly, I'm here this evening to share with you all that we have been working on a resolution that we would love to share with the Commission and would love for you to support. I'm doing a bit of an open invitation. It's so short that I probably could just read it all here this evening, but we'd love to be in conversation with you all. And actually, I believe our Chair Libby sent you an invite to our meeting. We are having a small in-person meeting that you'd be welcome to join via Zoom also, @Lenore Ryan in Asheville, next Monday at 5:00 PM. So you should already have the invite from Libby Kyle's, our Chair. But regardless, we can send it back out if you need it. It, just to let you know, it is, it's called CEDAW, so it's the Counties, or Counties on the Elimination of All Forms of Discrimination Against Women. And that is riffed off of the CEDAW in 1979, that is the Convention for the Elimination of All Forms of Discrimination Against Women. And so we thought, what a better time for the county to step up and support women in our county. Specifically, this resolution would help to hopefully address the wage gap that is still so big here in Buncombe County. But I believe I've seen figures around 82%. I know Asheville City is a bit better. But regardless, we're taking direction from Durham, which also, which actually passed this ordinance in 2017 unanimously, and Durham actually has the smallest gender wage gap in the state. So again, we really hope to be in conversation with you all and look to, you know, working on this together. So outside of that, I will break there and say, I am Darlene Azarmy, and as a resident of Swananoa, I echo the concerns that folks here in the community have been voicing tonight. I do hope you can come and check it out. I know that some folks even brought their families in tonight, and safety is a concern here, so I just want to echo that. And then, oh, looks like I'm up on time here, but finally, I will also just echo the, ask for the plastic bag ban. I lived in Eugene, Oregon for a couple of years, and the city of Asheville is looking to Eugene, which is similar in population and demographics, looking at its cahoots model for mental health. So I encourage you all, if Eugene did it, we can do it. Let's follow the Outer Banks and blend, or at least restrict, single-use plastics in Buncombe County. Thank you all.
I had signed up, deleted. My name is Chris Everhart. I am a 26-year citizen of Buncombe County. I live in the Swan, right in the middle of the corridor from the Dollar General in East Black Mountain, the Dollar General on Highway 70, the Family Dollar in Swananoa, the Family Dollar in Oatine, and the Dollar Tree on Riceville Road. I live in the middle of that. I am disappointed. I've voted for many of you, but I don't feel like you're keeping my and my community's interests at heart. It's a moot point that Dollar General cannot be construed as a community service to anyone but people who have a vested interest in a for-profit capitalistic company, but you're putting them ahead of us. It is not only redundant, but it's also a nuisance and now a hazard. Years ago, the US 70 corridor was considered a priority corridor for beautification, safing, and greenway connectivity. Somewhere along the way, the county lost the money, or perhaps just the stomach, to give us something like that in the eastern part of the county in the Swan. Other areas have benefited from some of those efforts. It's disappointing that after dropping that, this is what we're being offered. I'm also old enough to remember when plastics were not ubiquitous, and we used a lot of different other products and other things, and recyclables and biodegradables, and I survived. And I think people of other generations will survive too, and we can do a plastic ban. And I echo a lot of the other things that people have said tonight. Thank you.
Anyone else who would like to speak? Yes, please go ahead.
Hi, I'm Dr. Phyllis Robertson. I live on 110 West Oakview Road in Asheville. And, you know, it seems like in the times that we're in right now and what we're witnessing in the world, it seems kind of small to come and speak about what we're concerned about in our community, but I think also we need to speak up as well and kind of look out for our community. And I just want to express appreciation to Bob Presley and also to Parker Sloan for their willingness to listen to the community out in the McIntosh, Sardis Road, Sand Hill area, and recognizing how much development is affecting our quality of life there and how the traffic congestion just continues. And I just want to remind the Board and also the public, IC Imagine School is now the second-largest school in Buncombe County at 1,230 students. The only other school that is larger is TC Robertson, a 4A school. And IC Imagine operates no buses. Traffic is backed up on the roads going out Pond Road, on McIntosh Road, on West Oakview already, and now there's a planned apartment complex that's to go in across the street from them, sharing an intersection with their only driveway into the school. And the Board of Adjustment has approved that with some contingencies based upon what DOT has said. I welcome any and all of you to come join me for a late brunch, or an early brunch, or an early breakfast, or a late dinner, or any of those things, and witness for yourselves the traffic that we're experiencing. The idea of building an apartment complex, pouring in more traffic onto these roads, out of the roads, out in the area that already has so many more apartment complexes that have been approved for development, and knowing that Sardis Road is now set to not go under widening... I'm repeating myself. It's not set for widening until 2025, and that's only when right-ofways are going to be sought. Construction won't happen for years later, so we continue to pour more and more traffic into roads that can't handle, the infrastructure cannot handle it. So I, again, want to express my appreciation for your willingness to hear us, and we welcome you out into our community anytime. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, anyone else? All right, appreciate everyone taking time to come out and speak to the board about your, about the issues and concerns that were brought up at the meeting. All right, the next item on the agenda. Got a couple of presentations, and the first one is a proclamation recognizing Buncombe County Agriculture Awareness Day, and Commissioner Terry Wells is going to present this item, and Jackie Gillespie from the Buncombe County Women of Farm Bureau is here to help us out with this. Thanks for being here, Jackie.
It's my pleasure to present Jackie Gillespie with the County of Buncombe Proclamation, Buncombe County Ag Awareness Day. Whereas March 22nd, 2022, has been designated as National Agriculture Day to remind the public of the importance of agriculture to everyone. And whereas Buncombe County has over 1,000 farms and more than 72,000 acres of farmland, which produce almost $50 million in cash receipts in Buncombe County, and whereas the Buncombe County Commissioners have recognized the importance of preserving farmland in the county through its support and funding of the Farmland Preservation Program, which helps preserve production farms and open space in Buncombe County, and contributes to the economic health and environmental well-being of Buncombe County. And whereas the Buncombe County Commissioners understand the important role Buncombe County farmers and agriculture contribute to maintaining a strong economic base in Buncombe County, and whereas the Buncombe County Commissioners recognize that Buncombe County farmers produce safe, affordable, and abundant food and fiber products that are used and consumed by Buncombe County citizens every day, and whereas the Buncombe County Commissioners desire to recognize the vital role of agriculture to express their appreciation of agriculture's significance to Buncombe County. Now therefore, the Buncombe County Board of Commissioners hereby resolves and declares March 22nd, 2022 as Buncombe County Ag Awareness Day. Signed, Brownie Newman, Chairman, Buncombe County Board of Commissioners. And I'll turn it over to Jackie Gillespie. She has something to present to us.
Thank you, Terry, and thank you, commissioners. We appreciate this. As always, we know how important agriculture is to everyone, so not just wanting to come and ask for something, we brought a little something back to you. So each of you will find a basket in your office, and all the items in the basket, and I'll just share quickly with you. Our agriculture either was produced here in Buncombe County, it all has a tie directly to Buncombe County. There's some honey, a beef stick from Hickory Nut Gap, little ag signs made out of old tobacco sticks out of the barn. There is some succulent plants that were grown in the one FFA in their greenhouse. There's some goat milk soaps, so just some different items. And our hope is that when you use these, or maybe you'll set that on your desk, that when you see it, you will think about agriculture here in Buncombe County. We also included some highlights from all the high schools, their FFA programs and what their kids are doing right now. The other thing, and I kind of stole this idea, but we have a jar we'd like to present to you of dirt. And again, like I said, I kind of stole the idea, but what is unique about this, there is a program in Buncombe County, or in North Carolina called Century Farms, and it was started in 1970, and it was to highlight farms that had been in a family or owned by a family and farmed for a hundred years or more. So in trying to come up with an idea of whose dirt to put in there, I thought about the Century Farm program. So there's twenty-one farms in Buncombe County. We were able to obtain soil samples from eighteen of those farms, and there is a sample from each one that we got in there. So we hope this is something that you'll be able to display up here, so when people come in, you know, it's, it's a talking piece, it'll get your attention. We'd also like to ask that maybe, because Ag Awareness Day happens about the same time every year, and so one of our missions this year is to research farms in the county that maybe aren't in this program, that we can help get there, because I know there are others. I know my husband's farm is eligible, and the farm where I grew up will be eligible next year. So I know there's other farms out there, so we'd like to, you know, come back about this time every year, maybe add a little bit of dirt to it from the ones that have been added. But there's a paper here that, that tells about the program, and I'll leave it with Terry, that can be displayed, and it tells, tells what it is. But again, we just thank you for your time and consideration with our project.
Thank you, Jackie. Thank you for being with us, and thanks for all the great work that you and your organization do. All right, we have one additional proclamation, and this is recognizing Women's History Month, and Commissioner Amanda Edwards is going to present this, and Rachel Edens, the county's chief equity and human rights officer, will share a few words with us as well. Thanks for being here.
It's my pleasure this evening to present this County of Buncombe Proclamation for Women's History Month. Whereas March is nationally recognized as Women's History Month, and whereas Buncombe County is proud to join in the nation's celebration of Women's History Month, in the 2022 theme, Providing Healing, Promoting Hope, which is both a tribute to the ceaseless work of caregivers and frontline workers during this ongoing pandemic, and also a recognition of the thousands of ways that women of all cultures have provided both healing and hope throughout history. And whereas American women of every race, class, and ethnic background have made historic contributions to our nation and community in countless ways recorded and unrecorded ways. And whereas Buncombe County is committed to creating an inclusive community that celebrates diversity and ensures all residents have equitable opportunities to lead healthy, peaceful, safe, and sustainable lives. And whereas whether serving in elected positions across America, leading groundbreaking civil rights movements, venturing into unknown frontiers, or programming revolutionary technologies, generations of women that knew their gender was no obstacle to what they could accomplish have long stirred new ideas and opened new doors, having a profound and positive impact on our community. And whereas American women have played and continue to play critical economic, cultural, and social roles in every sphere of the life by constituting a significant portion of the labor force working inside and outside of the home. And whereas American women were particularly important in the establishment of early charitable, philanthropic, and cultural institutions in our community. And whereas American women have served our country courageously in the military. And whereas American women have been leaders, not only in securing their own rights of suffrage and equal opportunity, but also in the abolitionist emancipation, labor, civil rights, justice, and other movements. And whereas despite these contributions, the role of women in American history has often been overlooked and undervalued in literature, education, and culture. Now, therefore, be it resolved that on this fifteenth day of March 2022, the Buncombe County Board of Commissioners hereby proclaim, March 2022 is Women's History Month, a time to celebrate the important contributions that women have made to our families, our response to the pandemic, our community, our state, and our nation. Signed by Brownie Newman, Chairman of the Buncombe County Board of Commissioners. It's my pleasure to present this to you this evening, Rachel. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, and thank you, commissioners. It's a pleasure to be able to, to receive this on behalf of the county and to have this as a tangible first step of many, many steps to come, building on all of the work that women and femmes and female identified individuals have done to support both Buncombe County and our country in every industry imaginable, from agriculture to engineering, homemaking to hospital workers, everything in between, and most importantly, everything beyond. So it is a pleasure to be able to, to have this and to proclaim March 2022 as Women's History Month. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Rachel. Thank you, Amanda. All right, last item under Presentations is a presentation from Don Moore, our Finance Director, on the fiscal year ending 2021 audit presentation.
Good evening. Good evening, everybody. I'm not actually presenting. Chris from CLA will be presenting virtually to you all. The audit is complete. I'm happy. We've got our opinions, we've got all the stuff filed with LGC, so now Chris needs to do the last formality, which is to present it to you all. So I'll turn it over to him.
Great, great. Good evening, Chairman, County Commissioners. Thank you, Don. Nice to see everyone virtually. I just want to say, first of all, thank you all for letting me, accommodating me by letting me do this virtually for my scheduling conflicts. I'm going to share my screen here. Whoop, host has disabled participant screen sharing. There we go. Okay, perfect. My apologies. Okay, all right. So what I want to talk through is the June 30, 2021 financial statement audit. And one thing that changed this year from years past, Don had mentioned that everything has been filed with the LGC as required, and this is just a formality, there is a new requirement that the auditor has to present the results of the financial statements within forty-five days of issuing the report. So, you know, that's never been a problem in the past, but it does require a little bit of additional turnaround time to make sure that we'll get this presentation as a result of the audit conclusion. So walking through my slides here, just a quick background about CLA, just again, I'm Chris Kessler, Principal with CLA. I lead our Government Services Practice in the Carolinas, Georgia, and Florida. We are the eighth-largest public accounting firm in the country, and myself and the team that work on the county's audit, year after year, are a hundred percent focused on serving states and local governments like yourselves. So the audit services we've performed are the same as they've been in years past, there have been no changes to our scope or to the requirements under auditing standards, but what I'm discussing with you today is the audit of the financial statements, the annual comprehensive financial report, the ACFR. The acronym's changed from last year, just be aware of that change. It is now ACFR going forward, as opposed to previously comprehensive annual financial reports. Our audit was performed in accordance with government auditing standards, and we also audit the federal and the state compliance, also known as your single audit. And what this means is you all receive a lot of grant funds from federal and state sources, and what you spend in a given year has to be audited to ensure that the county spent those funds in a correct and accurate manner in accordance with those programs. So the reports that we've delivered, the first is your independent auditor's report. That, that's our audit opinion, and that goes in your financial statements. Then there is the report on internal control of the financial reporting and compliance, which is also known as the Report on Internal Controls. This would be a report on controls related to financial reporting of the financial statements. Then there is the independent auditor's report on compliance for each major federal and state program. So that's your single audit report. And then there's the Governance Communication, which is a letter that we issued to the board. Just summarizing our audit procedures, you know, if there were any sort of major issues or things along those lines, they would be included. There are no such items, so it is pretty standard, but there are things in there that I do want to highlight, just so you all can, can hear it, because I do think it is relevant to you all from a board perspective. So the first thing is the auditor's opinion on the financial statements, it was unmodified. That's a clean opinion. That means the financial statements were free of material in the statement. There was an emphasis of a matter paragraph within the opinion. We have to highlight attention to certain things that happened during the year, such as an implementation of a new accounting standard that the county had to implement. It didn't impact our opinion, but that is one thing that will look different between year to year, but it really is just saying the county implemented this, and there were no issues in that implementation, and draw attention to the footnotes where that information's included. Our auditor's opinion on compliance, so the single audit report, was unmodified as well, so clean opinion. The scope and the timing of the audit proceeded as planned, and we had no changes into our procedures. The accounting policies of the county are consistent with industry standards and practices and generally accepted accounting principles. And then there are some significant estimates within the financial statements that are subject to change in any given period, but we do audit and analyze the inputs that go into those estimates and make sure that they're reasonable from year to year. We had no material audit adjustments. There were two notation items here of uncorrected misstatements. What uncorrected misstatements means is they are items that we noted in the audit that weren't material, but they were above a threshold that was larger than clearly trivial, and we present those to management and give them the option of passing or correcting. We just have to communicate those within our governance letter as those exist. No difficulties were encountered in performing the audit, no disagreements with management. And then the last bullet here, you know, management, as, as always, was cooperative and helpful and professional during the audit. You know, it was a pleasure to work with the county as it is every year, but, you know, everyone this year, as in years past, did a great job in getting us the information we needed. We always asked for a lot of information, and everybody at county management did an excellent job of being responsive and helpful to get us through the audit and get this thing wrapped up. So we're appreciative, you know, of, of the whole team and everybody who played a part in that. So the 2021 impact, just to kind of quickly look at it, you know, we, we talked last year about some of the delays of OMB, Federal Office of Management and Budget, that dictates the rules we have to audit the federal grants under. They were delayed in issuing their initial compliance supplement, and then they amended it twice, which is why I'm coming to you in March with this report, as opposed to much earlier after fiscal year end, as we all would have preferred. I will tell you, our firm's position, whenever there are compliance supplement updates and things pending, we will wait, we will be conservative to make sure that we don't have to pull previously issued financial statements and single audit reports or opinions and re-audit. It's both from a risk standpoint, as well as for a time and cost standpoint for all parties involved. But once OMB issued their Second Amendment and said, no one is going to have to go back and issue anything we are done for 2021, we were able to move and get it wrapped up. But that was a big impact for 2021, and not just for, for everybody around the country. Federal grant programs that are pandemic-related, they are going to continue to be high-risk, meaning your coronavirus relief funds, your emergency rental systems, your state and local government recovery funds out of ARBA are going to be high-risk until they are fully depleted or those programs expire. So we will be auditing those every year going forward. And then, of course, as I mentioned before, there was a new accounting standard that went into place. From your all's standpoint, it does not change the, the presentation of what you probably are looking at from a board perspective. There's certain agency funds in prior year for items the county was essentially holding for other parties. The county had to analyze the purpose of those funds to determine if they were truly fiduciary. Everything went very smoothly. The county did a great job in implementing this. It was a lot of late work for county staff to do this, as with any new accounting standard, but everything was clean, and the financial statements were reflected appropriately. From an audit approach summary, you know, this doesn't change too much from year to year. There are certain things that we'll add or take away depending on, you know, what is happening. But the first thing we always are concerned with is management override of internal controls. You look at internal controls deeply every single year, and make sure that those controls are still in place, still effective, still designed well in the key areas of financial and compliance reporting. Additionally, this year, we have the, the major pandemic-related funds that we had to dive into, not only from a compliance standpoint, but to make sure that the revenues and any related balance sheet impacted those items was reflected properly in the financial statement. So we took a deep dive into that. And then the last bullet here, we always look prior to your findings to make sure that they were addressed, and if they were not addressed, we have to adjust our, our audit risk and our audit procedures appropriately. So in regards to findings, this year, financial statement findings, we had none. It was a clean, you know, as I said, no material audit adjustments, so no findings or anything along those lines. As in any year, there's recommendations and some minor things that we talked through with management during the course of our audit, but if anything that was of management during the course of our audit, but if anything that was of concern, we would have put it in writing and been presenting it to you now, more best practice, and just some minor things, just as a nature of an audit for a county of this size. Single audit results, these are just the programs that we've tested. So you'll see some familiar programs that you've had for years that are just due for rotation, as well as some others, such as the coronavirus relief fund and the emergency rental assistance pandemic-related, that we will be testing every year going forward. So the single audit results, as I said before, your opinion on compliance was unmodified, so it was a clean opinion. So no findings in either the federal or the state opinions on us. So with that said, then, you know, a little perspective as to where the county has gotten to from when we took over as auditors in 2018 to where we are in 2021 with no reportable findings. This is a, you know, from a board perspective, this is very important as an assessment of the, not just the audit process, but just general financial management and what management of the county has focused on over the past few years. And I know we've talked about that in years past, you know, and that's not a result of us changing our audit procedures or taking our foot off the gas in what we do. We are not a firm, and I am not a principal that will, you know, I would say live in a gray area or have, you know, wiggle room on certain things with findings. It's typically black and white, and it's either, you know, it's either an issue or it's not an issue. So our procedures have still been scrutinizing things. We've still been skeptical of transactions. We have done deep dives on these items and these areas, and then this year had no such findings, and we'll continue to do that. But I do want to highlight this from your all's perspective, just to show the progress that has been made and the focus that has been put in by management in cleaning things up year over year to get to this point where we are now. And just some brief highlights, I won't go through all these numbers. They're in the financial statements, but if there's one section that I'll point to in the financials, we all have to really look at and get that context, it's the Management's Discussion and Analysis, so pages seven through 17. This is the, this is the context of what happened during the year. Compares 21 Activity to 22, or 21 Activity to 20 Activity with the explanation, with the why certain things transacted the way they did, or what some of the trends were between the years, to give you that full perspective from year to year. And just quickly to hit on 2022, without getting too full into the details that I shared with the Audit Committee earlier this morning, there are two large accounting standards that are coming for '22 and '23 that are going to have an impact on the financial statements. The bigger impact is on county management and the level of effort and work that's going to have to go into it during the year to implement these. Everything is in process, and I know Don and his team have a good handle on things, but I just want you all to know, it is a big lift. It is going to be additional time for everyone, not just in the year of implementation, but going forward as well, because it is going to be a, it's a big ask and a lift, and something has to be updated every single year to track these contracts and these leases that need to be recorded into the financial statements. The second bullet, Information Technology Security. Just given where we are and what's going on in the world right now, we are seeing a significant uptick of attacks on local governments. Just to keep everyone diligent at all levels and all departments within the county is just going to be critical going forward to ensure that there's not a gap within either, you know, the human factor of folks falling for phishing attempts or any sort of, you know, just potential security faux pas as you move through. So just remaining diligent is really the key with what we're seeing in our clients, both in North Carolina and elsewhere. And then the last bullet, just making sure that there's a continual focus on compliance related to these pandemic funds. The Treasury has issued their final rule back in January that really points where these ARPA funds can be used in the state local government recovery funds. It's complicated, it's convoluted, and documentation is really key for every single tranche of funds that you all come up with, to be able to say, is this public health? Or what public health purpose is it? Is it capital expenditures? Or what's our justification? They've enumerated a lot of different projects and things that these funds can be used for in that final rule. Really, the key is just making sure every decision you all make to spend these funds, make sure it's documented as to what enumerated purpose or whatever justification may exist to use it. The Treasury is going to be looking at it. Auditors are going to be looking at it. Folks are going to be coming in after the external auditors and looking at it from an IT standpoint. Just having that all documented is really going to be critical for the county's standpoint to make sure that, you know, there's no trip ups in the future with that. And with that said, that's really the end of my prepared comments. So again, I just want to say thank you to Don and to Terry and the rest of the county finance team for all the help that they provide us, day in and day out, and getting the audit done, and everybody at the county that helps with this process. It's a pleasure, as always, and I will pause for questions, comments, or anything else that the board may have.
All right. Thanks, Chris. Don, anything else you'd add?
No, I would just say that it was a successful year. We had to wait quite a bit for the OMB information, but ultimately, we got everything done. So very happy with the way everything turned out. I'm very pleased to see the progress that we've made since I came in at the end of 2018 and where we are now. Staff has done a tremendous job. We are staying on top of all the Gatsby pronouncements to make sure we're getting things implemented and set up appropriately, so I'm very pleased.
All right. Great. Commissioners, any questions or comments?
You know, this is what, our sixth year, Robert, on the Audit Committee, and this is probably the smoothest we've had, and we've gotten to this point thanks to the employees. And especially, I can't say enough about Kelly, even though she's changed jobs, but she's hung in there with us and did it, and even in making the transition with Dan to Dan, it's been smooth. And he was there this morning in the meeting, and it was the smoothest we've had since I've been around. And hopefully, we will continue to go. But thank you, Don, and all the employees, Terry, all of you, who made this possible, because I'm wondering, sometimes when we hired you in '18, if you ever second-guessed it? Don't answer that.
Sure, some people do every day.
Yeah, but thanks, so thank you for the job. Well done.
Yeah, I'm going to echo that of what Kelly's done over the last couple of years of doing it, but a big old handshake to you, Don, for what you've done and how you're working with Dan so close right now, and Terry, that, I mean, that's probably one of the closest net staff that works together, and we're seeing the results right now. So thank you, Don, and I wish Dan was here, because he has been a big asset in the, what, 40 days he's been here or whatever, but you kept the airplane going there, Don, you and Terry and Kelly.
Thank you all.
All right. Thanks, Don, and thanks, Chris, for the presentation. Appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
All right. Commissioners, next up under Public Hearings is Consideration of Local Physical Recovery Funding Economic Development for Mountain Community Capital Fund. And Tim Love is going to get us started, and I see Matt Raker from Mountain Bizworks here as well. Thanks for both, both you for being here.
Great. Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. As the Chair said, I'm here to talk about the Mountain Community Capital Fund and ARPA appropriation. Related to that, we have a presentation that we'll walk through today. Matt Raker is here with me to answer any specific questions about the program, but I'll sort of guide us through the general changes. So this is not the first time you've heard about this item. We brought it before you at the last briefing meeting to give you an update on what we're talking about today. But as background and sort of an update on the request, Commissioners approve $1.25 million for the Mountain Community Capital Fund, or the MCCF, in November of 2021. This funding was allocated through the local fiscal recovery funding process, which is the RFP that went out last year. The original application for this program was submitted by Mountain Bizworks on behalf of the MCCF. And as a reminder for those that are unfamiliar, the MCCF is a joint program of the county, the City of Asheville, and CDFIs, which are community development financial institutions, of which there are three that we work with closely, Mountain Bizworks, Self-Help, and Carolina Small Business. As we discussed last time, there are some program changes we're recommending to stay in compliance. But today, our request before the board is one to conduct a public hearing, since this is an economic development appropriation that is required. But additionally, we're asking you to approve a resolution authorizing the $1.25 billion in economic development appropriations as proposed today. That's our background and request. I will do some refresher here on what our core issue was, as well as the suggested program changes. This comes at a pretty good time, because we just heard from our auditing firm reminding us that local fiscal recovery, ARPA funds can be somewhat convoluted and complicated. And so that's what we ran into here. Based on our analysis of the final Treasury rule, we're recommending a program change, just to make sure that we're staying compliant. Our original program utilized the funds for a loan guarantee program. However, that loan guarantee, while a good thing, would not potentially be expended in time to meet Treasury's guidelines. The only way that a loan guarantee would be expended is if a loan defaulted, and of that, of course, is not the expectation for the majority of these loans. Treasury guidance says that any expenditures of ARPA funds has to occur by December 31st of 2026. Based on the way these loans are structured, we would not see that occur, as I said, with the loan guarantee. Based on these issues identified, we worked with the CDFIs to see if there was another way that we could structure the program to make sure that we were compliant with Treasury guidance, while still maintaining the original intent. And as a reminder, that original intent is to benefit individuals employed by small businesses in our community. Due to the changes, there is a requirement for a public hearing, as stated, and that would be the purpose of today. And then a crucial point, no additional funds are being requested for this program. It's the same original allocation, no change to that. So that was our issue. Our current program, here's a summary of it, and we'll do a comparison slide here in a second to see where all the changes are. Still a small business lending program. Goals to create jobs by lending to small businesses that lack sufficient credit or collateral to access capital needed to retain and create jobs. Our population, we're dealing with small businesses here, and in particular, those that are funded by low-income entrepreneurs. The funding for the program is $1.5 or $1.15 million that will be used for direct loans to businesses, with an additional 100K for admin expenses. The results, 90 businesses are expected to receive loans, which will create or retain 320 jobs. Additional note, the way this program is structured, we are able to maintain the loan guarantee asset, which is also a good thing. So key changes here that we'll talk about on our next slide, we're moving away from a loan guarantee program to a direct loan program. Main reason for that is a direct loan program is clearly eligible under Treasury's guidance. A loan guarantee program is still great, but does not meet the guidance because of the need to expend funds by that December 31, 2026 date. Summary of key changes, on the left, we've got key components of the program, then we show you how it was originally proposed, when this was applied for, and then we show you our latest on the far right. So this is our proposed program. Program manager in the original application was Self-Help. Here, we're proposing that it be Mountain Bizworks. The funding remains flat, so you see that there's no change there. The use of the funding in our original program, again, a loan guarantee. Our proposed program is now direct loans. Outcomes remain the same. Loan guarantee amount remains the same, and then our loan guarantee source shifts. Originally, Buncombe County would have provided the loan guarantee, and our proposed model, that is provided by Mountain Bizworks. So that brings us to our request for board action. The request before the board is to conduct the public hearing and then ultimately approve the resolution, but we're here to take any questions you may have. I can talk about logistics. Matt is also here to talk about any specific questions about the loan program and the guarantee.
All right. Commissioners, are there any questions? We did go over this at the briefing meeting, at our last meeting as well. But any other questions right now? Should we go ahead and open the public hearing? Or do you want to share any additional information before we do that? Okay, great. All right. Let's open the public hearing on consideration of this economic development project at 6:16 PM. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak during the public hearing? Mr. Yelton?
I'm commenting for one reason. It probably won't go anywhere, but it has to be recorded in the record. I would like to see if we're going to give $1.25 billion to Mountain Bizworks. I would like to see exactly what our target is, and I would like to have a report on at least six-month basis, or when is the thing over? When is it going to end? And when it ends, we need to know exactly what happened and how many of those loans were a success. Because if you don't get that information and you don't keep it, how are you going to know what to do the next time? And the reason I ask that is because I worked for a city councilman one time, right here in Asheville, and there was a housing project going on, supposed to be building houses for people. 70% of the funding went to administration, and 30% went to where it was supposed to go. So I would like to see that. I'm not saying anybody's doing anything wrong. I'm just saying, if you want to get money from us, again, as citizens, you tell us what you're going to do with it, and you report how well you did. It's very easy to put that in. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. Any other members of the public who would like to speak during the hearing? All right. I'll close the public hearing at 6:18 PM. Commissioners, further discussion? So I think it's a great point about tracking how this community loan fund performs. Tim, would you like to share any thoughts on plans around how we're going to track this and see how well it's performing, and the percentage of loans that are successfully repaid on time, et cetera?
Absolutely. So two points that I'd like to hit here. First, this is an ARPA allocation. Because of that, we establish contractual agreements with each of our grantors, which have specific deadlines for reporting that actually go to Treasury. And so we post all of those initial reports on our ARPA website, the Buncombe ARPA website, and we've actually already posted our FY '21 report out there, just as a note. But we'll continue to do that. Secondarily, since this is a committee of the Board of Commissioners, we do report back on an annual basis on the status of the program, and so be glad to bring those numbers at our next scheduled meeting. We're a committee, just like the others, so we would present those.
I do have kind of one other ARPA-related question on this. So there are timeframes that need to be met to deploy the funds, right? They can't just sit around for years and years. They need to be deployed to be invested. But of course, these are, these are loans, not grants, so the expectation is they'll be repaid back. So then, once they're, once they're repaid back to Mountain Bizworks, then they can be reinvested, right, into some other local business owner who wants to, or someone who wants to start a new business, or maybe expand a local business. So they need to be deployed in a certain period of time, but then, we do expect this to be sort of an enduring, more of like an enduring revolving type fund over time. So I guess my question is, as long as they're deployed in a timely manner, then we meet the requirements for ARPA for them to be invested under those criteria, even though it won't be like they're, they're expended and gone, because they're going to get recycled over and over. Am I thinking about that the right way?
You are. The actual deployment is considered the expenditure, which keeps us compliant, but the expectation is that these funds will be returned and revolve to support additional business owners in the future.
Great.
What should I have to do? And refresh my memory, we might have talked about this, but the borrowers pay back with any interest?
Yeah, I would invite Matt to join us. The answer is yes, but Matt can speak to specifics.
Yes, the borrowers do pay back with, with interest, just like a regular loan agreement, and it's based on the kind of prevailing terms of whichever CDFI is the one that is providing the loans. In this case, all of these, as because we're doing them direct now, they'll all be... In this case, all of these, because we're doing them direct now, they'll all be through Mountain Bizworks. But then, you know, beyond that, continuing to leverage the Mountain Community Capital Fund will be from the three participating CDFIs.
What's the interest rate? Does it vary?
It really varies, just depending on the type of project, whether it's a real estate thing, or working capital, or something else.
Now, where does the overhead come from? Do you pay for that from the interest, or does it come from the funds?
Yeah, so there is a little bit of an administrative piece that's built into this, and that will help a little bit with that. And then there's some from the, some of the earnings from the interest, and then we've got other philanthropic supporters and whatnot. Thank you.
Robert?
Yeah. I don't know who can answer this, but I'm looking back at like our three o'clock. Now, there's 100,000 of it will be used for administration costs, right? So that leaves 1.15, so.
That's correct.
But then, some of the other will come from the interest. Is that what I just heard?
Yes.
Okay.
All right. Any other questions? Is there a motion on this item?
I move that we approve the resolution authorizing the $1,250,000 economic development appropriation for the project as proposed.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. Matt, thanks for being here. Tim, thanks for the updates. Appreciate it. Keep us posted. All right. The next item on our agenda is under new business. And this is a resolution authorizing execution of objection to the revised Nantahala and Pisgah Forest Plan Final Environmental Impact Statement and Draft Record of Decision. So at our last commission meeting, we heard a presentation from Friends of Big Ivy talking about updates to the Nantahala Pisgah Forest Plan, this long planning process for the two national forests located in western North Carolina. At our previous meeting, we'd also heard an update from representatives from the Forest Service about that same topic. So based on the discussion at the last meeting, the commission expressed support for submitting some comments, and technically, it's a formal objection to some aspects of the forest plan to be aligned with the previous two resolutions that the commission's already voted on, basically expressing support for protection of the Big Ivy area, which is one of the two main areas of the Pisgah National Forest that's actually located in Buncombe County. And we heard about how a lot of different counties across western North Carolina are submitting comments to the Forest Service regarding their perspective on management of these public lands within their county. So Buncombe County, if we do this, would be doing that, but certainly many other counties are doing something similar to be responsive to what they see as the important issues they want the Forest Service to consider. At the end of the day, it's the Forest Service's decision on this. There's been lots of public comment. We would just be one of many voices weighing in on this. So on the agenda, or the comments that have been drafted, you know, my review of them, you know, is that they're basically kind of a reiteration of the commission's previous position on protection of Craggy Mountain area and Big Ivy, and support for protection of that area primarily is under the National Scenic Area designation, which provides a lot of protection, but also a lot more flexibility than a formal wilderness designation so that folks in the community and visitors can continue to enjoy all the different kinds of outdoor recreation that are popular in that area. Although the small wilderness study area right up at the top of Craggy would be managed as wilderness and hopefully would be eventually supported by Congress for that designation. But that's a decision for Congress to make, not made here locally by the Forest Service. So anyway, that's the issue before us. So if we are going to file these comments and objection, we should do it tonight because the public comment period is going to close soon. So Will, thanks for being with us again. Did we miss anything big, or anything else you would add? Okay, great. Well, commissioners, any further discussion on this item?
Yes. We was able to date to talk and hear a different view than what we had heard last week. And I mean, it was only a 30-minute conversation. We had to get everyone into it where we didn't have too many commissioners at a time. It was just myself and Al. And I think we heard some things that kind of contradicted some of the other things. And with National Forest having a final say on this, I know this has got to be done, but are there any way this could be put off until I can understand a little bit more about it? I know the time.
Fortunately, I think if we're going to submit the comments during the formal period that's opened and closed, this would be the last meeting where we can do that. I think the next meeting would actually be after that timeframe. Am I right about that, Will? Yeah. So unfortunately, this would be the time we have to.
And I was just wondering about anyone else, because like I say, it's just myself and Al that was in. If they heard anything different than what has been said in previous meetings?
Well, you know, I agree with what you said, Robert, but I think I want to make sure that we hold the Forest Service in check. Because at the end, regardless of what we send in, they'll have a decision and they'll have a timeframe to look at it. But I've thought about it since I listened to them, but we should make sure. I think we have an obligation to protect our constituents. And I think that's what we're doing, you know, when we voice our objection. Now, if before, now I understood it, maybe correct me if I'm wrong, but before they would cut it anyway, they would have to come back, you know? But I didn't get, though, if we don't object, what's going to happen? You know, I want to make sure that we do protect it for everybody. So that's why for the resolution, I have no problem with it, you know, at this point.
I also found today's meeting, I was in a different meeting, very helpful. You know, I mean, I think the more we dig into this process, the more we're understanding. And it didn't lessen my interest in voting for this, but I do think that that dialogue is important as we move forward. And this also just feels like the sort of formal lever to pull, to register kind of the strength of community concern that exists about making sure we're preserving this. So I'm comfortable moving forward with the vote, but I will echo what you said, Robert, that I think that dialogue is constructive and should continue throughout the duration of this process, certainly.
Any other comments, or is there a motion?
Yes, I just say, when I think of this, I think of the two closest wilderness designated areas that I believe are the closest to us in Haywood County near, what is that, the Pigeon Forge River?
The Pigeon, yeah, and the North Fork of the.
North Fork of the Pigeon, yeah, yeah, on both sides of that highway there. And just, I think it's some of the most beautiful, well-protected land we have, and some of our strongest assets. And I think of this area not in a too dissimilar way. And I just think we should do everything we can to protect it and prevent development and logging and any other sort of damage or involvement in this wilderness area. And yeah, I just can't, I just can't think of a reason not to. I want to have a good relationship with the Forest Service, of course. I'm sure they want flexibility at a minimum. But I just think all the other concerns and goals that this supports is more important than that. So very much in favor. And I would, if I could make that in a motion, I'll make a motion to approve the resolution and submit it.
I'll second it.
And I'd also like to say, I understand that, and I think, let's see where it is. And Al brought up the most important thing, is they're going to come back or come out to everyone of any project that they come forward with. So we're not saying that we agree or disagree right now. We're just saying, this is our thoughts. And whenever they decide what they're going to do, then they're going to make a decision and bring it back again, which we got very little skin in this game, really. Our voice is not going to matter a whole lot, is it? No.
I don't, you know, it's a federal agency, right? The Forest Service is a federal agency. So, but, you know, I've spent some time working on these issues in the past in previous work. And I actually think that the voice that counties have is actually pretty significant. I would actually say, I think the Forest Service, I think the Forest Service listens to everybody, and they've got a hard job because there's many different perspectives. There's a lot of different competing ideas and demands on our national forests. And more than ever, you know, I mean, it's a million acres between Pisgah and Nantahala, but with all the growth and visitation to our area, these are very, very heavily utilized public lands in a variety of ways. And, but I think that, my observation is that the Forest Service actually does put a lot of weight on the comments that are submitted by the counties, as well as the small towns around the region who sometimes will weigh in. So I actually think our voice is relevant to the discussion, and I think they'll listen to it. At the end of the day, it's their, their agency is responsible for making the decision, but I think they'll listen.
And I guess that's what I'll need to say is, they want all the input and they listen. But what I understand, at the end, they make the decision of what's going to be done.
That's correct. That's right.
I think we have an onus, though, as county commissioners, to not only listen to what our constituents are sharing with us, but also to protect the land that we are responsible for overseeing in our own right. And this is an incredible opportunity that we have to say, this is important to Buncombe County. This is important to the future of Buncombe County, of conservation, of even recreation. And it's partially why I'm supporting it, but it's definitely about, it's about the land, and it's about listening, and the great responsibilities that we have on us as county commissioners.
All right. Any other comments? All right. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right. Will, thanks to you and everyone, thanks to, we really appreciate all of the folks in the community who, you know, worked really hard on this, been to a million meetings, stay engaged. So thanks for your work and keep us posted. Good luck. All right. All right. The next item on the agenda is consideration of recommendations for affordable housing goals in Buncombe County from the Affordable Housing Committee. So this is another item that we've talked about at a couple of the recent commission meetings and had a brief overview of at our briefing meeting today as well. So we have just a couple of slides that the committee working with the staff have put together to summarize the recommendations from the Affordable Housing Subcommittee. So we'll just take a moment and just walk through those real quickly. And can we put those up on the screen, please? All right. So over the last, I don't know, how long has it been? Six, eight months, maybe even longer at this point? We thought it would be like a meeting or two. It's been like a year. We've been working on this. You know, I mean, we sort of started off just sort of talking about like, hey, you know, what are other cities and counties across the state doing? Looking at kind of benchmarking what their strategies are, because although we've got an especially bad case of it, you know, cities across the country are struggling with affordable housing. As, you know, a lot of people are moving to, it's great to be a popular city. You know, you don't want to be the alternative. But one of the challenges, one of the big challenges that go with being a popular place for people to move to is that it puts a lot of pressure on your housing market. So this is probably one of the few issues in our community that there's not much debate about whether we have a big challenge around. It's really a question of what are we, what are the options to address it in a meaningful way? So that's what the committee's been looking at, and we've come up with a series of recommendations that I think we're real excited to bring to the commission for consideration tonight. So the five overarching goals that we're focused on, or one of my recommendations on speak to increasing the supply of affordable rental units, as well as affordable home ownership opportunities, especially looking at what we can do to address the need for more minority homeownership. You know, when we look back, all the way back to the 60s and 70s, you know, we have no greater percentage of minority homeownership in our country and in our county than we did that many decades ago. So this is a longstanding problem. It's part of this, it's part of this overall issue that needs to be a priority. We also want to focus on preserving what we think of as like the naturally occurring affordable housing in the community. There's a lot of folks who, you know, a lot of the housing in our community is older housing stock. But people, but it provides an affordable option. And so people want to be able to stay in their homes. Our county's emergency home repair program, which helps especially senior citizens and families who have members who are on disability, to help fix life safety issues in their homes so that they can safely remain in their homes and preserve that housing stock so it doesn't deteriorate and get lost from our community's housing stock. We also want to support activities that achieve functional zero homelessness in the community. And that's a topic we could spend a whole meeting on, or many meetings on. But I think the short version is that, you know, there's always going to be people who are at risk of homelessness and can experience homelessness. The goal of the functional zero homelessness is that we have strategies to move people who are at risk of homelessness or maybe experiencing it as quickly as possible into safe, into safe housing. And there's a variety of strategies that need to be implemented to achieve that. The other kind of key goal that we have spent a lot of time at the committee looking at is the need to address our community's inability to utilize all the vouchers that are eligible for in Buncombe County. The federal housing voucher program is one of the primary programs administered at the national level to help people be able to access affordable housing. But we're not able to utilize all the vouchers that we're eligible for in Buncombe County because the primary reason is that there's just literally not enough units in the market that, where the landlords will accept vouchers. And so we need to both build more projects where the owners will accept vouchers, and as well as implement some initiatives to encourage existing property owners to consider participating in the program, because there's a lot of advantages to them as well. All right. Next slide, please. And so this slide outlines our specific recommendations to the board in these different areas. So I'm just going to briefly review them. At a high level, if we can achieve these goals, we would positively impact the development or preservation of between 2,800 and 3,150 affordable homes between now and 2030. So it's an eight-year, little under eight years now, goal. These would include the construction, new construction of 1,500 to 1,850 rental units that would be affordable to families earning less than 80% of area median income with an average affordability rate of 60% area median income, so very affordable. And these would include a specific strategy to, such that 1,200 to 1,480 of the units would be developed through the Low Income Housing Tax Credit Program. And the reason that's important is that we'll, is that supporting projects that are, meet those criteria is this will leverage an additional 100 to 120 million dollars of tax credit equity to Buncombe County so that the investments to help build these projects is not borne just by Buncombe County taxpayers. We would be strategically utilizing this important national initiatives to help meet these, meet these goals. And then this would also include the construction of 200 units that would be available for residents less than 30% of AMI. So many of the, you know, poorest people in our community, these might be some individuals that we're trying to support moving out of homelessness into a safe place to live. Okay. It would also include the goal of 400 new affordable home ownership homes between now and 2030 for residents who make 80% of AMI or less. Support 500 emergency home repair units to help, again, keep people able to stay in their homes who want to continue living in their homes safely. Primarily focused on senior citizens, but not exclusively. And then also 400 either homes or apartments that. And then also 400 either homes or apartments that would be for residents who make between 80 and 120% AMI. All right, so all great goals, but what's, what's the investment needed to realistically pursue these goals? Next slide. And by its nature, these are long-term goals, and so, we want to emphasize that nobody can say with certainty over what period of time exactly what these will cost, but we felt it was important to provide the best estimates we could to the commission and the community around realistically the resources that likely need to be marshaled to successfully pursue these goals. So, in terms of the affordable rental units, reviewing projects that have come before us this year and in recent years, we're estimating that the average cost for those units is around $40,000 per unit of local funds. So, this is our big stretch goal of, within this overall set of goals, and so that, that would be $74 million between now and 2030 on that ambitious goal. The 400 home ownership units actually, we think will cost a little bit more per average, $45,000 per unit, so $18 million for the home ownership goals. The home repair projects tend to not be real expensive. A few thousand dollars can make a huge difference in terms of someone being able to safely remain in their home. We estimate the average 6,000 per unit, so $3 million for the emergency home repair, 500 projects. And then the 400 home ownership and affordable rental units that between 80 and 120 would cost 10,000 per unit, so a total of 4 million. If you add all of those items up, the total local investment needed to achieve all these goals, we assess to be $99 million over the eight-year period. We go into these issues with a lot of strong partners. The city of Asheville has really been, over the years, the strongest local government investor in the affordable housing space, and they continue to be, make this a high priority. They passed a bond referendum, some of those bond funds are still unspent and can be, can be available to work with the county on these goals. There's also annual home funding that our community is eligible for that can be invested towards these goals. And there's also some great philanthropic partners as well that make affordable housing a high priority. So, we estimate that between those various sources, between now and 2030, it's very realistic that the strategic partners in our community are likely to invest around $45 million or more towards these same, these same affordable housing goals. So, that would remit, that would leave a total of 54 million that the county would need to plan to invest in order to have all the resources necessary to achieve these goals as budgeted. We've got a number of different potential sources to pursue them. The county's currently investing $2.3 million per year in our annual budget, so if we simply maintain that, we could of course grow it over time, but if we simply maintain current funding, that would generate a little over $18 million by 2030, so a significant proportion of it. We're fortunate to have the ARPA funds where most of these goals for capital projects would be eligible. We've already invested about $8 million in ARPA funds towards these types of projects and goals, and we have another round of that about to be eligible to, for decision-making. We've also got some land assets that we talked about that have some great value potentially for good projects, and we've also asked Trust for Public Land to help us do an assessment around the potential feasibility of bond funding, and affordable housing could be one of the purposes for, for that. And we await the results of that feasibility study in the coming weeks and months ahead of us. So, um, we've got a, we don't, there's not just one solution to it, it'll probably take pulling from a number of different revenue sources to meet these investment needs. The last point we wanted to share on it from this slide is just that while this would be a significant increase in our investments in this important priority, meeting all of these goals will not solve the affordable housing challenges we face as a community. We do believe these goals would allow us to reverse the trends that we see where these problems get worse every year, and we've all been here a while, we just see how this has been a problem for a while, but it's gotten, it's gotten worse year after year. And I think the COVID pandemic has, has just made it, has just exacerbated it. So, we'll see this become more of a positive trend instead of a negative trend, but, but meeting these goals do not solve the problem. The Bowen Report and other analysis of this show that the needs are quite a bit more significant than the goals that we've outlined here. So, we won't completely solve it, but we'll be headed in a much better direction than what we've seen in recent years. We are also working on other affordable housing-related goals, like one that specifically we're focused on is the need for some additional emergency shelter spaces. But we just, you know, we've been working on this a while, we felt like it was important to go ahead and bring the parts of this plan that we feel like we're ready to consider, but there'll be other things between now and, you know, over this period of time, like these won't be the only projects we want to support, there will be others as well. So, I, we don't want to represent that doing this alone is the only needs that we'll, that we'll need to talk about as a commission this year and in the years to come. All right, so that concludes the overview of the goals and the budget estimates to achieve them. So, Parker and Amanda, I invite you guys to share any additional thoughts as well.
I don't know, I might be speechless. I'm just so glad we're here. I think there, we've, we've met, well, see, I found the words. I, I feel like we found the spot where it's, where it's both achievable and ambitious, that kind of moving target, that hard target. I think that's, I think that's what these numbers represent, especially in the, in the rental space. We've had a rental crisis for over a decade, and, and yeah, I mean, like, like Chairman said, this won't, this won't solve the crisis, there's so many other things that lead to the affordability crisis that many of our constituents are living through, but this will really start, it puts a significant paddle, if you will, from Buncombe County in the water, it starts paddling us back in the right direction, and I, I, I really feel that, so I'm excited.
I'm excited as well. It feels like a long time coming that we finally got to this point where we have goals and objectives on how we're going to meet them. I think for me, what's key to acknowledge in this is that we're not setting out to do this on our own, that this is absolutely a community as a whole endeavor, and that we have to rely on our friends and partners to ensure that we are able to increase our housing stock for those most in need right now. So, for folks who are listening who think that we're out there all alone, we're definitely not, I think Chairman Newman's comments and numbers really show that, but just really want to reiterate that this is such a significant and growing problem in our community that there's no way Buncombe County can do this alone, and that we will be calling on all of our friends and partners to, to be a part of increasing our housing stock and that continuum of housing that I continue to talk about that we need, and this is, this is a great start to making that happen in Buncombe County.
To that, and we also need Congress to, to
Absolutely.
...support and expand the, the Lytec program. That would make all these dollars go further.
100%. I would like to go ahead and make a motion that we approve this evening the affordable housing goals and objectives.
All right, um, commissioners, questions, further discussion?
Well, I'll just share some thoughts, I really appreciate all the effort and time that you've put into this, because I know it's, it's been a long time coming, and I, and I do really, um, I like seeing the numbers with it, so we have something very specific that we're working toward, and I think to Commissioner Edwards', Edwards' point, that it is really important for us to realize that it's going to take more than just what we can do, that it really is a community effort. And, um, one thing I was thinking about, and I appreciate you putting the, adding the, the vouchers in there with that as well, because I was thinking about that, I think what, we have around 15,000 rental units in the county, something like that, and if, if everyone who, you know, if all those big apartments, if they would do 5%, right, I mean, there's 750 units right there that would be taking vouchers, I mean, and those would be ready soon, you're not even having to wait to build, right? So, it seems as if we could really be trying to do some education, some awareness, and really build the community around being supportive of this effort, and, and that would, that would be a start as well, and a very economical start to actually getting us there as well, which would be really beneficial. So, I, I appreciate it, I'm supportive, and I just think we should continue to try to really look at, you know, how can we do this work for our community? And I appreciate really finding out about the 4% and how that can really leverage and make the money go farther, and I'm hopeful we'll continue to learn about more programs that can help us do this work. And I also just want to say with thinking about, you know, there's, there's so many things that impact, um, the reality of us having this affordable housing issues, and I do really appreciate the, the good work we're doing on economic development, and I think we need to do more of that because the work that we approved earlier this evening, I think those type of projects really go a long way toward empowering people and helping them have the funds to where they're not as likely to need the affordable housing. So, the more of that work we can do as well, I think is a good thing.
All right, any other comments?
What I'd like to add to that, I'm glad to see, because when I came back home from the Navy and college in the early seventies, it really was appalling to me when I saw not only the way the African-American community had been treated with redevelopment model cities and all that, but all the poor people in the city. You know, it was just not, you know, chicken heel different places, but now I think for the first time, hopefully, we can do something that will start to make amends for that. But my concern is, and I said it before, I just want to make sure, caution you, when we look especially at the rental units, I want us to really work at making these units permanent, not just 15 or 30 years, because that's a short time in housing, you know, 15 years goes quick, but that's what I want to do, and we can do that. We have the example, as I mentioned earlier, when you look at especially the land that the county has, the land that the city owns, you're way ahead of the game if you have your own land, so we can do a lot to make those permanent, you know, because we've got to do that, because folks, let's face it, 20 years from now, 25 years from now, things keep going the way they are, even if we can make these changes, we're still going to need more. So, but I think it's a start, and I'm for it, yeah.
I want to add one last thing to, to Commissioner Wells's point on the vouchers. I think one of the things that we've been really cognizant of as a subcommittee on affordable housing is ensuring the dignity and respect of all folks who, despite whatever their income levels are, that we want to be respectful of their housing needs, and I think that really, for me personally, led to why the vouchers were so important, and to your point of if everyone did 5%, it allows folks to not be singled out for their income status, and I think that's a really key component of being cognizant and deeply respectful of people and their, their personal financial situations as we move forward at, within our goals. Thank you for that.
On that, I think, I believe Asheville Thrive had a strategy they were running that was about supporting landlords around vouchers. Maybe at some point, we could just get an update about that from them and figure out how that might tie into this, but, you know, just to say what we said during the briefing, I'm very excited to have a chance to, to vote for this, appreciate the work that's gone into it by staff and, and the three of you on the committee, subcommittee, thank you.
They, they have been one of the groups that's presented to the committee about their programs in addition to the Housing Authority, and I anticipate they're probably going to submit an ARPA grant around, they've got a pilot project in the city, they're interested in expanding it county-wide, and I think that there'll be some ideas coming forward that we can look at around, around that, so. All right, I also just want to say thanks to our staff for the great work on this. I think these, you know, these subcommittees that we formed, you know, have really proven to be effective models for taking a deeper dive in this around the early childhood education work that Robert and Jasmine and Al have been doing with citizens and staff, and the great recommendations coming out of there, and I think this has been a really positive experience, too, and the staff have done a great job kind of helping us understand what other communities are doing in North Carolina, as well as in, in, in other parts of the country that we can learn from, learn from what's working well, learn from what's not working well, try to choose good strategies, try to figure out how to stretch the, you know, the investments as far as we can. And so, Sybil and Matt Cable and all the staff who have helped work on this and, and do the analysis and kind of help us refine these numbers and make sure, you know, we're bringing forward the best information we can, we really appreciate it. All right, I've got a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, thank you all. That concludes our new business. We now come to board appointments, and I'm going to turn, oh, actually, first, let's do the Asheville-Buncombe Regional Sports Commission. And Commissioner Amanda Edwards is currently serving, and Commissioner Edwards, are you willing to continue serving on this board?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Would be my honor, too.
All right, fantastic, thank you for, thank you for doing that, a lot of great stuff happening there. I'll make a motion to reappoint Amanda Edwards. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, and now we come to the Asheville Community Reparations Commission, and I was unable to participate in the interviews earlier today due to a schedule conflict, so I'm going to turn it over to our vice chair, Amanda Edwards, to facilitate this part of our discussion.
Thank you so much, Commissioner, Chairman Newman. We interviewed nine really terrific candidates today to serve as our five representatives and two alternates on the Community Reparations Commission, and thanks to Rachel Edens and DK Wesley and Lamar and Stacy for helping keep this moving today and keeping us on task and helping give us some guidance for this evening. We have five impact focus areas to fill this evening along with two alternates, and I believe at the end of our interviews, we agreed that we would each nominate a candidate to serve in each of those focus areas. I think where we are is we will start with criminal justice, we will each nominate, Lamar will keep track of that, and then whoever receives the most votes will be the representative for that. That does not mean that those other candidates can't move forward to serve in a different focus area. Are you all set, sound good? All right. I've started with Robert all day today. Robert, I'm going to go ahead and start with you to pick yours for criminal justice.
Dee Williams.
Renetta Waters.
Renetta Waters.
I've got Kelsey Simmons.
Got Dee Williams.
I also have Dee Williams.
We have a tie between Dee Williams and Renetta Waters, they both have three votes.
Vote somewhere else? I'm okay with that. Yeah, that makes sense. All right, economic development.
Renetta Waters. Dwayne Richardson.
Renetta Waters.
Dwayne Richardson.
And Renetta Waters for me as well.
All right, that would make that Renetta Waters for that position.
And to clarify then, does that mean Dee Williams will be the criminal justice? Because those were the two that were a tie, so we'll...
If, if that's the case, we could do it that way, if that's what the board chooses to do.
I'd be happy to shift my support to Dee.
Okay.
That position.
All right. That takes care of that. Thank you. Thank you all. Education, I'm going to start with you, Al.
Christopher Gordon.
Christopher Gordon.
Christopher Gordon.
Stephanie Lee.
Stephanie Lee.
Christopher Gordon.
Christopher Gordon would win that 4 to 3?
Yes. All right, healthcare. Al. I'm going to start with you.
Chantel Simpson.
Same for me, Chantel Simpson.
Chantel Simpson.
Stephanie Lee.
I'm sorry. Yep. Chantel Simpson.
So that would make Chantel Simpson the winner for that.
Housing, I'll start. Kelsey Simmons.
Kelsey Simmons.
Yeah, I'll try Kelsey Simmons.
Me too.
Kelsey Simmons.
Kelsey Simmons.
All right, so we have for criminal justice Dee Williams, economic development Renetta Waters, Christopher Gordon for education, Chantel Simpson for healthcare and Kelsey Simmons for housing. Robert, let's start with you for your two alternate picks.
Okay. Stephanie Lee did not.
Stephanie Lee did not move forward in a, in a focus area. Okay.
Do you want us to give one or two alternates?
Let's give one.
One.
Sorry.
Okay. Stephanie Lee.
Stephanie Lee.
Stephanie Lee.
It's, uh, Stephanie Lee.
And Stephanie Lee for me as well. All right, we'll go for a second one. I'm going to start out.
Dwayne Richardson.
Okay.
Dwayne Richardson.
Dwayne Richardson.
Dwayne Richardson.
Dwayne Richardson.
Dwayne Richardson.
And Dwayne Richardson for me as well. So we have Stephanie Lee and Dwayne Richardson serving as our alternates. I really do want to reiterate again that we really had terrific interviewees today and any of them would have made a terrific addition to, to the reparations commission. So many thanks to them for, for spending their time and willingness to serve today.
I, I want to also champion them for being able to schedule real quickly all of those applicants. They had a short turnaround time to schedule those interviews today, so I do want to make sure that we acknowledge that for their efforts to make them available today. So, thank you.
Thank you, Lamar. That's a great point. And to all of you all, I think we had a great interview process, so thank you for that as well.
All right, thanks, Commissioner. That concludes the board appointments. I've got a couple of announcements. On April 5th at 3:00 PM, the county commissioners will hold their briefing meeting at 200 College Street, room 326 in downtown Asheville. On April 5th at 5:00 PM, the commissioners will hold their regular meeting at 5:00 PM at 200 College Street, room 326 in downtown Asheville. We do not have a need for a closed session this evening. Is there a motion to adjourn? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We're adjourned.